I'd like to call to order the Shockey Public Schools School Board Work Session for June 3rd, 2024. Tiffany, could you please do the roll?
Valles?
Here.
Brophy?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Aldrich?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Muhammad? Aditya?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Please join me in the pledging of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Next up on our agenda is Item 3, our Saber Pride. Item 3.1 is the Staff Awards and Retirees for 2024. And here to present is our Assistant Superintendent Jim Klosic.
Thank you Chair Smith, and I think all of us were there for at least a portion of the event, if not the whole event. What a beautiful evening. We had amazing community sponsors with a particular heart. Thanked them on several occasions for their generous donation, making the event all come together. But it was a wonderful night. We had great staff trail. It was up this year or last year. We honored our Teachers of the Year. We honored our Teacher of the Year candidates. And we also honored our retirees. It was great to see all of our administrators there this year. They did a wonderful job of sharing information about those who had been nominated for these awards by their peers. I think one of the things that makes this awards night so special is it is in fact a peer-driven event. And it's not awards chosen necessarily by the district officer or folks like that. It's teachers really shouting out to their teachers. So wonderful night. You know, again, can't thank the community for their support enough. And we just have a few slides here that kind of encapsulate and capture the whole of it.
The big pencils were again.
Remember that?
They were.
And they were engraved too, right? The person's got them.
Well, I recited from our TLC, who I believe was their Teacher of the Year as well. So he came down here and made each one of them individualized.
And Chair Smith, if I might add, those were all donated by Imagine those pencils. They were over from the project.
The peer-driven nature of the event is awesome. You get to connect with, you know, all the different staff members across the district. You know, and get, and that's one of the more enjoyable things I get to do is work with a team to look at the nominations and the reasons for it. That's really, really cool. Just a amount of respect many of our people have for the people they get to work with each and every day.
And quickly, if I'm wrong, did we have over 210 pieces sent to?
Correct.
That was probably what 2025, the year before, correct? Super cool.
It's so fun to witness the event. And we kind of feel like a fly on the wall there, you know, just observing. But you really get the sense that, you know, this is a family, this community, and just how supportive the teachers are of each other and the staff. And yeah, it's just wonderful.
The emotions that were poured out of people during that are very touching.
Well, that was a big deal that we brought back that had gone away for a while, where the retirees weren't talking to people going, hey, can we speak at these retirement recognition things? And sure, why not? We'll give you an open mic. You're out the door. What could go wrong? No, but it's been great. They're just super touching and really, really a neat tribute. But that came, that was feedback that we got that we acted upon afterward received.
Thank you, Jim. Next on our agenda is Item 4, the Consideration of the Agenda as Presented. I want to bring people's attention to a new item. Item 7.1 is an action item, the consideration of proof of the SCA collective bargaining agreement. That was added within the last two hours due to the passage, the approval by the teachers. So that has been added to the agenda for tonight. Otherwise, it is the same as was posted earlier.
I make a motion to approve that proposal?
Second. We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Brophy. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Item 5, Public Comment. This is the time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to two and a half minutes. The sign up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to this evening's meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to this evening's meeting. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Next on our agenda is Item 6, Information Portion. And Item 6.1 is Summer Programs. And here to present is the TLC Principal and Targeted Services Leader, Eric Service.
Good evening. I'm also going to invite Brandy Lachin, who is one of the district's MTSS coordinators and also has a side gig of coordinating our summer elementary program. And so we're here to give you a little preview of summer programming and what it's kind of shaping up to look like for 2024. In general, a lot of the programming is, in terms of structure and content delivery, very similar to the way it was last year. However, we've made a few scheduling adjustments in order to kind of maximize some efficiencies that we thought could help in a variety of ways that I'll talk about here as we go through the different programs. We do offer five programs across all of the grade levels, K through 12 in the district. You know, all the programings, all the programs for students in grades K through 8 still fall under the umbrella of targeted services. And so a number of those programs do try to identify students that would substantially benefit from extended learning from the year. The programs in grades nine through 12 are more focused on either credit recovery or our ninth grade program is considered a launch or transition program to really help those students who are rising into ninth grade have a successful start to their high school career. And so I'm going to sort off by kind of letting Brandy take the floor and explain a little bit more about the elementary program and then what that's looking like.
So our elementary summer school program, it's five weeks. We go from mid-July till mid-August. And we have different themes that we have presented for every single week of our program to kind of keep kids engaged and excited about coming week after week. Our first week, we have our hometown heroes. And we partner with Scott County Public Library. And so they come in and they do sign up for the library card and let kids check out books from the bookmobile. We also have our police officers that will usually come and they'll hang out with the kids at recess time. So it's lots of fun community engagement. Our second week, we have the Great Outdoors. Our third week is Gamology. Fourth week is Animals? Wacky Wildlife, that's what it is. And our last week is Math Scientists. So every grade level kind of has a science experiment that they kind of get to do and participate in. So in addition to those themes, we also have a focus on reading and also on math. So our students kind of get some camp-like theme experiences, but also extra with academics to kind of give them that boost that maybe they might be going into the next school year. Last year, we had about 324 students that were served in our program. And this year, right now, we're at 353. And then also, our kind of registration for our program depends on how many staff that we can get in order to serve during our program. And this year, currently, we have no waitlist. So we're really excited about that. We are currently getting all those confirmation notices ready to go. And I hope to get them to buildings tomorrow so we get them sent home in backpacks before they come to school here. So it's really exciting for me from a planning perspective. So this year, we have 19 classroom teachers. We also have two LED teachers that work with our second language learners and one special education teacher. This year, we'll have three, possibly four, parent professionals that work with us. And then something that we added into our summer school program that's a little bit unique, probably three or four years ago, were specialists. So this year, we have three different specialists. We have a music with her therapy dog. We're really excited about this one. It's her own dog, and she has a great interest in bringing that into the music classroom. She did a Saber Squad after-school program with some of the students over at Sweeney. And so she wanted to kind of try to see what this would look like in the summer school program. So we're excited to have that one. We also have Viad as one of our specials. And then our other one is called Gym Math Tips. So we have a math specialist in our district that loves to do creative things with math. And so she's going to be one of our other specialists with us. So yes, you could laugh at the puns with that one. They're real funny. So that's kind of our elementary summer school program.
And, you know, just a big shout out to Brandy and the other coordinators. It is a heavy lift. It's like a school year consolidated into five weeks. And so all the systems that are required to kind of launch a summer program and execute a summer program, that stuff, the planning really starts all the way back in late December, early January. The other coordinators were also invited tonight. They had other commitments and couldn't make it. So I'm going to speak on behalf of the middle-level program. And like I mentioned before, one of the things that we are trying differently this year is we are stacking all programs on top of each other for the calendar. What I mean by that is all five programs in the district are running starting July 8th through either August 1st or August 8th. Okay, we realize that we could get some efficiencies out of transportation that we weren't utilizing before. Also, there's some efficiencies in some of our other systems as well, such as food service and whatnot. And so the month of June now is really kind of a catch-your-breath month and the final preps to launch in July, which middle school is doing as well. You can see that the calendar is essentially the same as the elementary program, although there is a second tier of busing that happens at this time. And so the middle-level program's starting at 8:15. This year, we right now are just about at the same place as we were last year, with 145 students enrolled. One of the things that we did notice slightly is there is a slight bump up in our ML newcomer learners this year at the middle level. Actually, a significant bump. Last year, we, I think we had nine or 10, enough to kind of just eat by one section. This year, we're close to 19 or 20. It's actually turning into somewhat of a co-taught experience now, something that you'll see also is trending at the high school. But before I get to the high school, I want to talk a little bit about the Saber Launch Program. Remember, this is a relatively new program. We launched Launch right around the pre-COVID time, kind of a pilot. And then it came back after COVID. And each year, it's getting a little bit more traction. This year, it'll be at the high school again in the freshman academy. And, you know, it runs 8:15 to 12:15. The focus of this program truly is a transition program. And so not only, you know, our students getting a little bit of like geometry prep content, a little bit language arts kind of preview content, they're also getting a whole rotation of SEL enhancement, which focuses on things like communication. How do you connect with a teacher? What does an email look like when you need to advocate for yourself? We also do some tech startup during this transition program, as well as a comprehensive tour so people can kind of get grounded in who their people may potentially be for support. Okay, this is a four-week program. And students actually earn their first high school credit in this program. So they come into the school year plus one after completing their commitment to graduate ceremony, which is at the end of this program. Right now, we have 55 students enrolled. It may look like a slight dip. Don't let that kind of confuse you because where we really saw a bump in the numbers was actually in the newcomer part of this program. Okay, and so, you know, this program is running in the ninth grade wing. We have credit recovery running in the southwest wing. And then for nine through 12, we kind of roll all of our newcomers into kind of a shared program. And that program has seen a significant bump this year. I'll get to those numbers shortly. The high school credit recovery program, for the first time, is running in July. You know, typically, our strategy has been, let's keep kids tethered right after the school year and get them right into credit recovery. We're going to step out a little bit and see what happens when we launch this in July. If it's any indicator by our numbers, our numbers are actually bumping up from previous years in terms of enrollment and registration. So we are happy to see that. This will continue to be a self-paced credit recovery model where students can come in and test out of some content they may have already developed proficiency in. And then in some cases, students may earn one, two, in some cases, maybe more than two credits during this four-week session. One of the things we are trying differently in the credit recovery is we have noticed that, especially in the math area, what we typically use as our platform, it really doesn't articulate very well. It's just kind of clunky, and we're going through a whole new math sequence. And so we are piloting for the first time more of a teacher-created recovery course in geometry, just to see if we can get a little bit different results than the Ingenuity Program that we typically use. Our new newcomer program, last year, we had nine students. This year, we have 32 students. And so we've had to recruit another teacher. I think a big reason for this bump, and a shout out to all of our CFLs in the district, they put in hours of communication efforts to really make registration for this program as seamless as it possibly could be. And I think this is the result of their labor. Just want to also acknowledge the coordinators. At the middle level, Jason Larson is continuing to coordinate that program. At ninth grade level, Michelle Edgerton, who's also a TLC teacher, is coordinating that program. At the high school level, Nicole Cap, who is our Dean and Behavior Intervention Specialist at the high school and runs, at the TLC and runs independent study, is also coordinating this program. So right now, at the high school, we have 257 students registered, which is a slight uptick from last year. And we are fully staffed. And so things, all in all, are in a good spot. Like Brandy was saying, this is the time of year where we're trying to get everybody sectioned and get, you know, all the rosters out and get the communication out to the families so that they can, A, guarantee they know they're in a summer program, they can plan their summer accordingly. So those confirmation notices will go out this week. Also, we missed if we didn't talk about Mi Casa. Mi Casa is a community education-based program that kind of is a brother-sister program to our elementary summer learning adventure. Like last year, they will take team in, run their program out of Jackson, just like the elementary program, right after the elementary program finishes in the early afternoon. And so there are students that have the option for full-day programming if they also register for Mi Casa. And so it's a great partnership program. And it's been very successful. It is also student-s somewhat-staffed, where they have mentors or tutors that help make that program possible. Okay, again, like I mentioned, summer programming is basically a microcosm of the school year programming, just in, you know, a smaller scale, but also a smaller timeline. But it still requires all the systems. And so, you know, Palmer Bus is a strong partner, Welcome Center, making sure students have the information and families to register. We have all the other partners up here that help make summer programming a go. And so I'll just say the Nance Academy Champions, Decamatic Heart, Community Ed, our CFLs, our food service, LTE, Custodians Technology, and on and on. And so, yeah, we're in a good spot. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one. And that's in regards to the newcomer program. So those 32 kids, those are new students to our district that have never been in our school system before. Would that be correct?
New to the district, oftentimes new to country. And so, you know, typically, they'll have a multilingual or an EOL level one or a two in language development and language acquisition. And learning how a school system operates is kind of like the primary objective of that newcomer program in the summer.
So not like students coming from Saks or something?
No. No. But to that point, I think, you know, Chair Smith, I think it's important to note that when we do our summer programming and we're communicating with the community, we include Saks and some of the other program schools in those conversations. So if there are students that we can serve and it makes sense based on our criteria, then we'll scoop them up.
That's exciting. Like seeing all the great planning.
I've really seen this all since I've been on board. So I appreciate all the hard work and through COVID. And it's really become a really good program. So thanks for your efforts, because I know you've been involved in it for several years. Thank you.
I did get to witness the launch graduation. I guess I'm guessing it was in COVID. That was super inspiring just to see these kids and how excited they were. They treated it like an actual, you know, a graduation ceremony.
Yeah. And the idea is to give them a tangible vision of what they're really shooting for in high school. And let them dress up a little bit, show them what a diploma looks like, and come walk through and experience it.
Very rewarding. Thank you.
And if any of you are available, July 8th. I'm always looking for adults to help us get our little kids to the correct classrooms. So just thought I'd solicit your help right now while I'm here. In case you don't have anything happening at 7:30 in the morning on Monday, July 8th, you're welcome to come over to Jackson Elementary School. We'll give you a list of students. We can help sort those kids and get them where they need to be.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Item 6.2, Secondary Student Support in Action. And here to present is Jackson DeYoung, I hope I pronounced that right, MTSS coordinator and coach.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm just going to connect to the screen here.
Well, Jackson is connecting. It's great to have him here. He is coordinating currently our 612 MTSS program. He has some support and some of the leadership that he's had at the elementary level. He's based out of our high school, and that's what he will be speaking about today. And I would add that having an MTSS program at the high school level is not something that is all that common we've seen at this point. So this has been some very good work. And we are one of the first districts to be able to do this.
Right. Hi, everybody. My name is Jackson DeYoung. And like Jim said, I work at the high school as the MTSS coordinator and coach. And today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what that looks like and how that connects to our student support philosophy. So in true teacher fashion, I am going to start with some learning targets for us. The first thing that we're going to talk about today is just in general, to better understand this example of a system that serves each and every student at Shockey. And we're going to talk through some student-centric examples of the system and how it actually plays out for our high school students. And then we're going to learn about how we can collectively empower teachers to effectively tap into and use this system. So the first thing to think through is just how this MTSS model works to begin with. It's a layered approach to student support. And so it kind of aims at identifying the lowest possible intervention level necessary to give students what they need. So the graphic that I like is to think of kind of like a birthday cake. And so our Tier 1 level, we think of as our quality core instruction. This is what teachers do on a daily basis with their lesson planning, with their interactions with students, with their family outreach. We consider that guaranteed curriculum that's viable for every single student in our school. If we find that that's not enough to give students the support that they need, we kind of think from a Tier 2 lens, which is more or less group-based supports, and how we can coordinate groups of students to receive the support that they need. And then going farther into more like one-on-one individualized plans that would support the needs of our students. And so I'm going to use this graphic a few different points in my presentation. At the core, this is really about teachers, school counselors, school support staff working together with the community, with the students, with the family, to really empower each and every student. And so what that looks like in practice is, number one, providing professional development to teachers on evidence-based intervention strategies so that teachers know what best practice looks like when interacting with kids. And intervention coaching support. One of the hats that I wear is working one-on-one with teachers that are going through a new-to-them intervention plan for a student and making sure that those teachers feel supported as well as they work to support the students. And then lastly, providing staff with clear and consistent data to make sure that we're using, as I like to say, database decision-making rather than vibes. And so what that looks like for students is, I really think database decision-making comes from an equitable framework. And so thinking through what's best for kids and making sure that we don't, we don't miss kids when we look at data to figure out who might not be on track to graduate or who might be experiencing uptick in absenteeism. We can use data rather than our gut reactions to determine the best action steps for students. Like I said, research-based intervention strategies to make sure that students are getting the best possible support. And then our team does a lot of work with progress monitoring to make sure that the plans we put in place are effective. Okay. And so thinking through our different teams that support this work, the first Tier 1 level at the high school is our academy meetings. So teachers engage twice a week with academy meetings. One of those two meetings takes the shape of intervention training and data review. So teachers engage with data that I provide to them about how students in their class are doing and to identify possible students that might need additional support. We also use that time for little mini PD sessions for teachers as well. A smaller team comprised of people like our deans and our counselors and our other mental health professionals, that's called I-team. And the goal of I- And the goal of I-team is to plan and put in place Tier Two and Tier Three interventions for students. We also use that time to review the effectiveness of previous interventions that we've attempted for students. And then sort of overseeing everything, I work with a small team of teachers at the high school and then to facilitate these meetings and then organize and provide data to make sure that we're making measurable improvements to our goals. Okay, let's talk about a kid. So Johnny is a student who might struggle with regular attendance. And so what we might do for Johnny is, at the Tier One level, we might empower students, empower teachers to contact home and have a conversation about, you know, what sort of barriers or aversions might be getting in the way of Johnny being a more regular attendler. It might be a meeting with Johnny to provide support, as like I said, to try to identify some of those barriers. I always think a good first step is to have a conversation with the stakeholders involved. Assuming that that doesn't help change Johnny's attendance patterns, one of the support systems we tried this year was attendance groups at lunch. So our counselors were running attendance groups with students that shared struggles with consistent regular attendance. And they had an opportunity to kind of talk with each other about some of their struggles with getting to class on time or sometimes at all. And talked about, they engaged in some learning with each other about the importance of regular attendance and how that affects their overall academic performance. If Johnny were to join that and it not work well, another one of our supports at the Tier Three level is called the Attendance Mentorship Program. So the Attendance Mentorship Program is a relationship model where a teacher or trusted staff member, usually someone that's not connected with discipline, so usually not like a dean or assistant principal, that person would have regular, consistent check-ins and set an attendance goal for a student. And it's about setting regular, consistent expectations, but it's really also about building that relationship. Johnny is not this student's real name, but Johnny is a real student. And talking to Johnny, Johnny tried the Attendance Mentorship Program last year, and it had a strong, his attendance improved strongly. Talking to him, he says he's better before with his teachers, and now he's on track to graduate. Why is this different? Number one is the data. Like I said earlier, I think a lot of, sometimes in education, student supports can come from like gut reactions and vibes. And I think it's important to acknowledge our bias and sometimes our oversight. And so I think it's important to come from a perspective of data to make sure that we're not forgetting or missing kids that might need our support. The other piece is it's all of the intervention strategies that we teach teachers are research-based. And I think most importantly is this is something that's happening with students and families. It's not happening to them. Part of my role is I have lots of conversations with families, lots of conversations with students about how do you feel about school? What struggles might you have? What successes might you have? How can we work with you to find the right solution and make sure that this is a positive, successful experience? Some feedback that we've gotten, first from other teachers. Teachers in our surveys that we've given and in our conversations with teachers speak very highly of the system and the support that we give them. One teacher gave an example of like execute versus plan. Me and the other members of the MTSS team have done a lot of the heavy lifting for teachers in terms of data and progress monitoring and paperwork, so that teachers don't have to go above and beyond to keep all of those things organized. It's really more of, hey, we have this student in your class. We think they could really benefit from this strategy. Here's how to do it. Here's the data to collect. Ready, go. Teachers say they like that. Just give me something to do and I can do it, rather than a less specific expectation like, do a reading intervention with the student that might be, leave a teacher wanting more specific guidance. The other piece that's cool is, like Jim said, we, Shakopee Schools is a leader in this area. We have been reached out to frequently by other secondary schools, especially at the secondary level, asking for advice on how we can put this structure and how we can share what we learned with them and how other schools can kind of mimic some of the teaming structures and the support structures that have helped put some positive things in place for students. That's all I have as far as my presentation goes. I would love to answer any and all questions that you might have.
I have a quick question for you.
Yeah?
How often do you guys meet? Is it weekly?
Weekly.
Every week?
Yeah.
Before the school day?
It's during the school day. So it's during, at the high school, we have several different iterations of I-team that meets to account for, each academy has their own I-team that meets.
So tell me, you know, how they work together, the MTSS team and the I-team?
Yeah, good question. So me and a small team of teachers, we set the agenda for I-team. So we gather feedback from other teachers around potential student candidates that might benefit from a Tier Two or Tier Three system intervention plan. And we set agendas to talk about specific kids that we think the data and teacher and parent feedback would suggest, like, yeah, we can put some extra supports in place. And so those agendas are set usually three, four days before we meet as an I-team to make sure that members of that I-team can make sure they're familiar with the students on the list before we meet together. Then when we meet, we're a solution-centric team. I-team is all about talking about solutions that work for kids, not about talking about, we don't sit around and admire the problem. We talk with each other about how can we put something in place that's going to help this student right away? Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
How many years have you been doing this?
This is my second year in this role. Prior to this role, I was teaching physics at the high school.
So this, so you don't have data to support like the how it's going?
Longevity? No. We have data that we, to like, we have data around last year and this year, but I think it's such a small sample size, it's hard to say, it's hard to say what like grand impact it feel it's had. I think anecdotal evidence still has a place. And so our conversations with families and students and with teachers would say that they feel good about the way, the direction we're going. And so for now, that's probably stronger than like, oh, MTSS directly correlated to this really big spike in attendance or like graduation rate, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, my last question is, I see you guys check in, check out.
Yeah, yeah, that is, it's a good one. It's a good one.
This seems like a good opportunity. We approved the position at the last board meeting, the new attendance engagement specialist in coordination with Scott County. So I'm just curious what you foresee as your collaboration with this new position?
Yeah, I am excited. I was on the task force to help, Jim invited me to be part of the task force to help sort of outline the parameters of what that position could look like. Yeah, I think the sky's the limit in terms of how we can collaborate together to address attendance specifically. I can talk way longer than I'm sure I have time allotted for about attendance struggles in 2024. They're not exclusive to Shakopee, and it's complicated. It really is. It's everywhere. And I think I'm excited that we, I'm excited for the position and how they can really help with our family and community outreach. My understanding is before students start to really kind of fall off in terms of their attendance trajectory.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I might, I'm going to take this opportunity. And I think you've got a nice glimpse here of Mr. DeYoung and how he's shaped things. And he's been very, very kind, talking about a lot of other folks who are doing great things. But truly, he's done exceptional work in this area, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I love, you know, you talk about being solutions-focused, and I think that's one of the things that sometimes schools and school districts struggle with. And we're flipping the script there. It's about doing, you know? And a lot of times, it's kind of 80% about sort of collecting data and planning and doing whatever, and 20% doing what it should actually be the opposite. And so really, really excited about where this is going to continue to go. And it's ultimately about each and every kid. And when you can connect with that and you can support kids, guess what? They're successful. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Next on our agenda is item 6.3, Capital Projects Renewal Overview. With us to present is Dr. Redmond. No, go ahead.
Yeah, if you remember back to March, we had a board meeting. This is kind of another step in the direction forward in terms of planning and sharing information in regards to a possible capital projects levy. Really good time to do it because if you've got financial questions, we've got Billy here too for some specifics. But, you know, we'll use the phrase capital projects levy, but also want you to be aware of, a lot of people refer to it as a technology levy or a tech levy instead of the more formal name. And if we broke this down into really kind of two things, at its core, it's about safety and it's about critical support. It's about safety, and we're really talking about internet safety, cybersecurity, physical safety, camera systems, all of those type of things. Communication systems, alarm systems, alert systems, and the technological components that go into that. And then we're talking about supporting student learning. And in the world we live in, just about every part of student learning has some connection to technology, whether it's the, you know, the student information system, the grading system. We just heard Mr. DeYoung talk about, you know, the ability to kind of take data and process it and organize it quickly and efficiently and then be able to work on solutions. Well, technology is part of that too. And so the critical support for learning, and the truth is, technology is embedded just about everywhere in student learning. And we've, there'll be more on this on June 24th, but this is, I don't know, pulled out a little bit of information from our thought exchange, our community conversation that has wrapped up recently. And we actually asked some questions about safety and critical support, the importance of school safety. And this was part of that new feedback. And the question was, what areas of instructional technology, internet safety, and general school safety are the most important to you and why? And what is the district doing well in these areas and what can be improved? So we wanted to get feedback in this area. And here are the top five themes that come out of that feedback. And again, you know, Tiffany Olson will be giving a much more detailed presentation to the board on the entire thought exchange and community conversation on June 24th. But, you know, in terms of instructional technology, lots of different benefits. There's opportunities there, you know? How do you find that right balance, you know, in terms of learning platforms and not over-reliance? You know, how are you, you know, how are you using technology as tools to enhance student learning, to enhance brain development, to enhance growth? Internet safety, really important part, came up quite often in this community conversation. And then general school safety, you know, getting, you know, having good physical security procedures, having, you know, we've talked some, you know, I think even how the buildings are structured and some of those things. Any positive school resource officer partnership, and there's some opportunities. And we're really excited about, you know, we're shifting, you know, from having four SROs to having three SROs and a district-wide safety position who will really, really support the work of the SROs, connect with the education world, if you will, connect with all of our systems and provide, and we think that's an enhanced, improved system because just having somebody who is here full-time doing that is going to help us to kind of maximize efforts from all different parts of our organization when it comes to all different forms of student safety and in partnering with our school resource officers. So we've been working on that. We've shared some of that. It's been posted. We're interviewing for that position. We did that in cooperation with the city of Shakopee and the Shakopee Police Department. And, you know, you might have heard me say, yep, there were four SROs. There'll be three. There are still four persons dedicated to that school safety. So it is not a, it's not a decrease in safety support. It's a shift in how we're doing it. And I believe it to be an enhancement and an improvement in what we're doing, so. School communication, lots of feedback in this community conversation on that, just how we connect, how we communicate, and the school environment as well came up. And there's a variety of opportunities there to help us connect and to serve students and their families better. Little background information, you know, we're talking about a capital projects levy that was first approved May 5th of 2015 to run for 10 years. The final year of this current levy, that 10th year of collecting revenue is in calendar year 2025, meaning that money will be spent in the '25-'26 school year. The earliest the renewal of this capital projects can be done is November of '24. The latest it could be done without interrupting the revenues that come from that and the vast array of, you know, safety and critical support services. The last opportunity would be November of '25. And if you remember, we had Brian Droes, our Director of Technology, here at our last meeting, providing, you know, the most recent in a series of technology updates. You know, and that's a continuation. We've got a couple links to fact sheets going back to 2015 and some of that other data there as well. And I think I've already said the word renewal a couple times. You'll probably hear me say the word renewal about a dozen more. This is a renewal of, you know, this capital projects, we would be seeking a renewal of the current capital projects levy, the one that's been in place since 2015. And really, if you break it down as a renewal, what's really being asked for is a continuation of that same capital projects levy that at the end of its first 10 years, you know, we would be looking to have voters approve that for an additional 10 years to continue with the, you know, the same capital projects levy, if you will. Not going to get into this, but some of the formality of ballot language is kind of as an information item again. And because it's a renewal, it has, you know, the bold on the bottom of the ballot is very different than the operating levy that we brought to the voters in November of 2021, which had a really big, bold statement about, you know, you are voting to raise your, to increase your taxes. Because this is a renewal, the requirements for language are different on the ballot measure. And again, more background information, trying to project out, you know, what we would be looking for that, you know, that first year, which that should actually say calendar year '26, which is fiscal year '27. But the capital projects levy, if it continued at the same rate of growth that it has, we would be looking at in the final year of, you know, this, at $6,215,800. And the question that then gets asked is, well, what if it doesn't get renewed? And not to go, not to go to that place, but that is the one that gets asked of us quite often. You know, the short answer is there will be budget impacts felt across, you know, the district that we're relying on, you know, what would be $6 million at that point to pay for technology services, cybersecurity, video security, curriculum, software. And we would have to, you know, find other revenue sources, primarily the general fund to make. up for that shortfall, meaning that you would have reductions in those areas as well. And certainly we can go much more deep, deep into that topic at a later meeting. Planning has been in motion for this possibility. We've got the constructive feedback committee that had its first meeting towards the end of April and has a bunch on, you know, scheduled just to kind of be talking about ideas, getting some feedback and improvement on those. Been working, you know, finance and operations, communications, our tech department, legal counsel, our financial advisors from PMA Securities. And, and we've got a, you know, communications plan and election timeline and draft form. Both, you know, both those tend to be shorter in duration than compared to an operating levy timeline. And, you know, again, in this very focused messaging, should it be needed? And if, if November five, twenty-four is selected as, you know, is selected as an election date, what does the school board need to do to have the renewal included on the general election ballot on that date? And there's really three kind of key things there. Review of capital projects levy, final plan and details, which is in the works currently. Approve a resolution at the June twenty-fourth, regularly scheduled school board meeting. We could delay that, do that at July twenty-ninth. And then, you know, continue to receive updates, you know, on an informative communications plan. And I know that you would ask if I didn't add this in here. Yes, it would be opportunities as part of that informative campaign where we'd have some community forums and chances to attempt to get together with people and share information about kind of the, all the different pieces of this. That is, so happy to, happy to entertain questions. If they're too tough or too financial, I'm going to send them over to Bill.
I think just, just a comment, I mean, we knew this was coming. I remember voting for it in 2015. A lot has changed since 2015 from a technological advancement, not just in schools, but just in our lives in general. And, you know, I hate to see that, I mean, the good news is that this would not be a tax increase, so that's positive. If it wouldn't pass, it would be devastating to our district in so many ways. I mean, we, we went through budget cuts here not too long ago and the community helped restore them for us, but this would be extremely devastating. So I, I hope, I think one of the things that concerns me is just from a communication standpoint, I know Tiffany's all over this, but without a newspaper in town, that is an audience that they vote. That's the older, older population in Shakopee that they're going to go out and vote and they, that's how they get their information, you know, they're not on social media and so to me that's an, an audience that will, if we decide to do this, will need to be somehow, some way targeted to help spread the word.
Without a doubt, and you'll see in the district update later, we've even, not specifically for the capital projects levy, but going, all right, with the Shakopee Valley News going out of business, you know, what can we do to enhance how we provide information? Why don't we go from three to four newsletters to all in the community? And we're certainly open to other ideas.
I think we're fortunate, to be honest, to have had this for the past however many years, ten years, up to almost ten years. You know, a lot of, a lot of communities, one neighboring district doesn't have a tech levy and have struggled and still don't have one passed. So just the benefits, the, just the way the world has changed with cybersecurity and the insurance that you need to have and that wasn't, that's a problem in 2015 and it is today. So I think we just need to make sure that people understand that piece of it because I also remember back in 2015 when this was approved, that there was money for secure entrances at some of the schools that didn't have the secure entrances at that time. I think that was elementary school.
Yep, I'm a person.
So, so just a lot has changed and so I think, you know, it'd help get us to a certain place in time, but now as the world evolves, we need to evolve with it and it just requires us to have this, we have to have this.
Yeah, just to echo that sentiment, I can say like, from like a student perspective, obviously like this tech levy is providing that technological safety, providing that critical support, but all, but it also like teaches, like teaches the kids in the class, like the importance of that safety and importance of that critical support. Like we've all heard the adage, like you give a person a hammer, everything's a nail. And I think, but like, one of the common themes that you see with this thought exchange was that you want to ensure there isn't reliance, but reliance, but yet integration of that technology. And I think one of the great benefits of having a tech levy like this, like from my own personal experience, is that you get to see the power of like the technology, the importance of like how important it is to make sure we have it, we, everyone is up to date on the latest software, everyone is up to date on all the latest tools that they can use with this technology. And we're also, we need to, like, because we're taught this importance of we get to respect, we get to respect that power, that we have the, like, potential, the potential that this technology has. And I think this type, and like as our, like, even beyond school, like as our world is getting like more and more connected, it's important to make sure that we all understand how to best and use and respect that connection. And I think the tech levy does a great job of that from like my own personal perspective.
Thanks, Sid.
I'm going to make a quick comment. Ten years it has been for a while. Also, you know, to know, like now it's coming, artificial intelligence is a huge. So also, we don't have a newspaper, the local newspaper, and that's unfortunate. But what we can do in the meantime, the district can send a newspaper there to the neighborhood and then we will focus on technology and how they are critical for the four things, the safety, the physical, cybersecurity, also an elementary, one week they can focus for the elementary to put in the backpack and take home at the middle school. So people, we have to emphasize how technology is important for the education and for the students and family. And I think, you know, that's a campaign, you know? We have to educate and also we have to develop our communication since we don't have a local newspaper. That's what I'm saying. It's, it depends how we organize because we have the fact, we have the truth and we are sharing with them. And also we can reach our technology wires, C-Gate and other, you know, and how they can help out. We have to have a backup if it doesn't go through, you know? Everything it depends how you can make and this is a real issue. And I'm confident our community care about our students and our district. I'm optimistic, you know, they will, they will consider, as they did the last referendum.
Quick question for Bill, because I'm assuming he'll know the answer better than me, Mike.
Give me a shot.
I know, actually, I know you probably know the answer. How much money do we get from the state that is dedicated to this?
For, for technologies.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly what I thought and I figured.
You knew the answer to that too.
I knew the answer, I just wanted to make sure that it got out. Thing is, is if this doesn't pass, we're going to have to pay for the services, we're going to have to pay for the cybersecurity, the video security, all of this. It's not going to go away. And if, if it doesn't pass, it's going to have to come out of the general fund, which is going to leave. It's going to make an impact on the entire district. This renewal is very important.
I think just one other thing to piggyback about off of a little bit of what Mohammed said. I mean, we've all heard about school districts that have had been held hostage somewhat with ransomware attacks. I think Rochester was one, Minneapolis was another. And with, you know, without having this renewal, it gets more challenging to try to protect our students' privacy and their data, especially our most vulnerable students, from being able to tap into our systems because that is a very, very expensive endeavor. And without having that support, the dollars to be able to put the right tools in place to protect ourselves is, I mean, I hope people, people should understand that, but they, that may be over their heads from a technology standpoint, but I think that that's something that as a parent, for them to understand that what that, what some of the, some of these dollars do to go and protect their children's privacy and their data. And I think that's another key component to this.
The, the cost of not doing this is even greater than the cost of doing this, if that makes any sense.
Well, I had one, kind of one closing thought, which kind of got alluded to and it's one of those pieces, you know, we talk about each and every student, where we talk about, you know, every kid is my kid. And it is a way to level that playing field where, you know, each of our students has access to high quality technology tools, technology system. And I think if, if we truly, you know, and we'll see a lot more in thought exchange, even our community resonating with that. We had, you know, Jackson DeYoung talking about that, that truly it is about each and every kid. And if we, as a school district, can, can really provide high quality learning and be really hard to, you know, have high quality learning in this day and age, preparing our students for their future, not our past, without high quality technology and a high quality technology infrastructure. So, thank you and, yep, more as, more as we move forward, so.
Dr. Redman? Next on our agenda is item six point four, a fiscal twenty-five budget. Here to present is our director of finance, Bill Manazi.
Good evening, thank you. Included on the screen, you will see the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget, just in terms of setting the table here before I dive into the details. Because I'm in finance, I have a Dell rather than an Apple, so Tiffany is going to do some of the driving and that's heavy lift because I'm going to kind of jump all over the place here. So we talked beforehand and we're going to do the best we can to go back and forth. So just by way of logistics, this is an annual process where the school board will be asked to approve the budget for the upcoming year before the start of the fiscal year. Obviously, the fiscal year runs from July to June and so the school board will be recommended to approve this budget at the next meeting on June twenty-fourth. This budget was reviewed by our finance and facilities committee meeting before this meeting and the same finance and facilities committee will have a chance to review this in a little bit more detail at our next meeting on June twenty-fourth. There's a chance this won't be the most exciting agenda item you've ever had, but I'll try to liven it up as we go along here as much as possible. So we'll, we'll dig into the details and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Amber in the communications department and she did really a great job of the cover that you see and really bringing some of this to life. So thank you to her and to our communications team for their work. Going first to the letter of introduction on page three, you will see in our letter of introduction, budget assumptions are obviously a very important part of this budget process and we really start with our budget assumptions. You can see our major budget assumptions in this budget are listed in the bullet point form there. Our operating levy authority of one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight per pupil for taxes payable in 2024, that is tied to inflation. State aid, the per pupil formula, the second year of the biennium, we're scheduled to receive two percent from the state aid, from the state. The formula allowance for next year will be at seven thousand two hundred and eighty-one per pupil. As you'll see later on in the presentation, that increase, that nominal increase of two percent is mitigated by our decrease in student enrollment. And so you'll actually see that year over year, we have a negative change in our state aid formula allowance, which obviously creates some pretty significant budget constraints. We talked previously about interest revenue, so we did decrease our interest revenue projection for next year related to sort of a downgrade in interest earning expectation. Pandemic funds, that's been a recent topic. This year, meaning twenty-three, twenty-four will be the final year of our pandemic funds and so our one-time pandemic relief money is gone for next year, so it is at zero. Our enrollment, we'll talk at length about our student enrollment, our enrollment projection for next year is seven thousand four hundred and thirty students. That's our student estimate, which is different than our pupil unit estimate, which takes a weighting factor on secondary students. And a decrease of two hundred and three students, two point seven percent from this year. And related to that, we'll see enrollment adjusted staffing, which is to keep our class size targets the same this year as next year. We need fewer FTEs to do that and the decrease is about seven students to get that done. Hopefully I don't have to write anything down. We will next go to page five. So this is really the meat and potatoes of this budget. And so I think what you'll see in terms of summary here, the school board has a fund balance policy that states it will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance between eighteen and twelve. We are there. We have a projected budget fund balance percentage as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five of ten percent. And so you can see that we're at twelve million, three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eleven thousand rounded in terms of our fund balance projection for, at the end of next year. So we're right at that mid-range, which, that's the good thing. You'll see that we have some budget headwinds projected. It's been touched on earlier related to enrollment, related to some legislative summary things that we're looking at. And so in order to do that, in order to remain at that ten percent, you'll see at the, sort of halfway down the page there where it says assigned for district programming, we're projected to start next year with just about one point seven million. We're projected to utilize about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand of that assignment for district programming to move to the unassigned fund in order to keep that at ten percent next year. So the good news for next year, really the highlight of this budget, is that we're forecasted to end next year with a ten percent fund balance, which is right in the mid-range of our fund balance target. Going next, skipping ahead to slide eight or page eight, this is our budget process. And so this is really the, from a public standpoint, and this is really how we do our budget. Our budget is a continuous four-step process. Each step in the process requires school board approval and is open for the public to come in and inspect and comment on it at any given time. I won't read this in great detail for the sake of time, but our process really started last December when the school board approved the truth and taxation presentation for taxes payable in calendar year 2024. That's really the building block, the first building block for creating the budget for this year. The second building block is item number two, which is what you're hearing tonight, the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget, and you'll be asked to approve that next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Then the revised budget will, will be step three in the process. We will look at that in January and February. And really the revised budget is just a revisit on any items that are in process that are not completely known during the adopted budget process. So think, when the legislature is meeting, think about, you know, we've been asked to meet previously when we're not quite sure what that legislative summary is. In this budget, we did use contract estimates for the SEA, the Shakopee Education Association contract. And so in the revised budget process, we will have a certain month of actuals and so we'll utilize those actuals as part of the revised budget process. And really step four then is our annual financial audit presentation from our auditor. That generally happens after the close of the fiscal year in November. So a four-step process, which is continuous throughout the year. So, four-step process, which is continuous throughout the year. I think now, for the sake of time, I'd like to skip to page 11, and specifically at the bottom, under economic factors. So, like all school districts in the state of Minnesota, we are heavily reliant on the state for our education funding. And you can see that next year, as I mentioned, we're scheduled to receive an additional 2% in state aid. We do have, as was previously mentioned on the, on the bottom of the page, a voter-approved operating left referendum, was originally 1,266 per pupil. It will be 1,338 next year. The cap, the operating levy cap, is $2,203 rounded, so although we have seen an increase on that related to the operating levy inflation, we're still significantly under the cap of 2203. Skipping now to some enrollment information, starting on page 14. I'll start with some enrollment history, and then some enrollment projections. And I'll give you the fair warning, that some of this is, is rather bleak when it comes to our enrollment projections. It is information that we have known, we had an enrollment study done. All of our enrollment declining, in a period of declining enrollment, is, is factored into the budget projections that you see, and the vast majority of it is related to a decrease in birth rates in Scott County. That's, that's something that we've talked about at length in, in previous meetings. So, you can see from an enrollment history standpoint, looking back to fiscal year 2019, our total ADM, average daily membership for students, we had 8,247 students in 2019. Next year, we're budgeted to have 7,430 students. So, a precipitous drop-off here from 2019 to 2025 of just over 800 students during that time. Again, related to birth rates and just graduating senior class sizes that are in the near 700 range, and incoming kindergarten classes that are in the mid-400 range, right? So, we know that that, or we believe that that 400 range will grow, we just don't believe that it will grow to the 700 range that we're graduating. That's the main driver of that decrease in enrollment. Looking at page 15, then, we go from enrollment history to enrollment projections. And you can see, then in order to develop enrollment projections, we develop assumptions on enrollment. That's what you see at the top of the page. We have five main enrollment assumptions. Letter A, we have held our kindergarten number constant. This year, it's at about 433. We've held that constant moving forward. Similarly, in letter B, kindergarten through grade eight, we have rolled that forward. Essentially, this year's first graders become next year's second graders, and so on and so forth. There is not a growth formula in the kindergarten through eighth grade projections, or we have not included a growth formula. Letter C, we have included an additional 49 students based off of historical averages from grade eight to grade nine, much of which comes from Shockley Area Catholic School. Letter D, post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO students. We've estimated approximately 60 students that we are, there are students that are attending, many of whom are attending full-time PSEO at Armendale. We collect the revenue on those students, and then turn around and pay the secondary option for that coursework. And then lastly, letter E, early childhood intuition estimates based off of five-year history. So, we gather up all of those assumptions, and we can develop some assumptions on enrollment moving forward. So, you can see, as I mentioned in fiscal '25, we're projected to be at 7,430. And as we look forward through the end of our long-range financial planning model, we're projected to decrease down to 6,558. So, as I mentioned, that's, that's a challenging from a budget standpoint, but it's something that we have known for a long time, something that we're tracking, but it does create some, some budget constraints, needless to say. Skipping forward now to the financial section, and page 19. I realize this is 45 pages, I'll let, I'll give you the good news, that I'm going to skip page 23 to 37, because they're just visual illustrations. So, we're almost there, problems. Revenue and expenditures, all funds combined. So, this is a pie chart showing our revenue and expenditures. Far and away, our largest fund is our general fund, as you would expect in similar prior years. Our food service fund accounts for approximately 3% of our total. Community service fund, a little bit less than that, just about 2%. Our building fund is much, much smaller, our building construction fund. Our debt service fund accounts for about 11%. That's the principal in interest payments on voter-approved debt service. Our internal service fund, that's our self-funded health and dental account, that accounts for about 7% of our budget. And then our trust fund. So, we have a trust fund for OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and also a very small amount for a scholarship account as well. Skipping now to page 20. In order to develop a budget, we have to develop some assumptions, not only around enrollment, but also on revenue and expenditures as well. And so, we have developed those assumptions in the general fund, related to those different revenue categories, and I won't read all of these to you. I talked about state aid earlier. So, our total state aid is increasing by about $2.5 million, about 2.9%. The main driver of that increase is an increase in special education state aid, and also English language learner revenue as a form of basic skills. You can see in that chart, the 2% increase from the state, as I mentioned, is mitigated by that loss of student enrollment. And so, you can see in the chart, how that reads is the $7,138 gen ed formula allowance in fiscal '24. The increase of 2% moves us from 7138 up to 7,281. However, when factoring in that 203 decline in students, the year-over-year gen ed formula allowance calculated actually decreases by about 336,000. And so, next year, we will be receiving less state aid than this year, although we're, although all school districts in Minnesota are receiving 2% increase in the state aid formula allowance related to that decrease in enrollment. So, just another layer of, of budget challenges. Under property tax revenue, Dr. Edman talked about the capital projects levy, and that is the main drive, it's tied to the net tax capacity. The net tax capacity in our taxing district continues to see nice increases, and that capital projects levy is really the main driver of any increases that you would see under the property tax revenue category. Federal revenue or federal grants has seen a significant decrease, that's the expiration of the pandemic funds. So, that's seeing a decrease of about $2.2 million. You can see a summary of the federal budgets is included, special education and title funding as well. And then local revenue, the main driver of the decrease there is the downgrade of our interest revenue projections, a much smaller category, but a downgrade nonetheless. I won't read on page 21, but there's a revenue summary of the non-major funds. I said I'll skip to page 22, which is our expenditure assumptions. So, similar to the revenue side, we also developed some expenditure assumptions. The main driver of our expenditure budget is salary, wages, and employee benefits. The budget for, that is $96.49 million, and includes projected salary, wages, and benefits for all bargaining groups. The budget for salary, wages, and employee benefits represents 78.3% of the total general fund budget. It's been stated before, and accurately so, that school districts are people-intensive organizations, and we are certainly fit that mold, salary benefits representing 78.3% of our budget. Now, all school districts in the state of Minnesota are going to be slanted this way. You're not going to find any school districts that have 20, or 30, or 40% of their expenditure budget and salary wages. All school districts are going to be that way. I do have the status of employee contracts, sort of midway down the page, and then I do have an asterisk, and it's an important one, that I mentioned before, related to the adopted budget and the revised budget, due to the timing on the contract. I use cost estimates in the adopted budget. We'll use actual settlement costs in the revised budget, and any budget variances that are created as a result of that, you'll see during the revised budget process next January, On the other line, you can see the, the increases in the other areas, but for the sake of time, I'll just leave that to your review, and instead, I will skip all the way, this is where I make the big move here, I'll skip all the way to page 40. Just under the informational section, just a couple of items that I'd like to highlight. First, the capital projects levy revenue. You can see the historical on that tied to the net tax capacity. We've talked about that at length, both in the Finance and Facilities Committee, and also touched on that as part of this meeting, and so, I just wanted to reference that that's there for you in terms of informational item. On page 41, you will see a brief touch point on our debt summary in the Fund VII, which is our debt service fund. You can see that looking from 2026 to 2027, there's a, there's the debt drop that we often talk about, that's roughly $5.5 million coming up, which is, is between 2026 and '27, and then we have another debt drop between 2030 and 2031. So, some good news related to paying off our debt service obligations over the next handful of years, we're seeing two different debt drops.
Could I, I just want to interject, there's some of our board members have been around long enough to remember when that was just kind of an incoherent mess, when we would put this slide up. This now has an orderly sense, and it's, you know, it's obviously that much of that has been refinanced, but it also, you know, sets a pathway towards, you know, the future, and that, we're getting there, you know? Those were kind of long-range projections not too long ago, when we were doing some of that work, so. Just looks a lot better than it used to.
And then lastly, page 42, again, just additional information. This is just additional information on operating capital and lease levy. And so, if you're ever curious on what we're doing from an expenditure standpoint under those programs, you'll see the detail there, and if you add up the operating capital expenditures of $2.56 million, and the lease levy expenditures of $1.39 million, that'll give you your total operating capital expenditures for this year. So, this is, for lack of a better term, a profit and loss statement of what we're doing for both the operating capital and lease levy program, just in terms of additional information. With all of that, I will skip to the last page, which is page 44, and again, revisit our timeline. So, we started this last fall, or excuse me, last winter, with developing assumptions on enrollment, revenue, and expenditures. Much of the work has been done with the Dr. Edman, Mr. McClosick, and also our administrative team, so thank you to, to that group for their work. Also, thank you to my team, a lot of the work that you see here is heavy lifting by our finance team, which is much, much appreciated, to put this document together. And then lastly, from a timeline standpoint, as I mentioned, really, the, the budget highlight here that I'd like to drive home is that despite, you know, a forecast with some pretty big budget challenges ahead of us, our budget that we are recommending, that we will be recommending next board meeting, does include a 10% fund balance at the end of June 2025, which again, is right at the mid-range of the school board policy. So, good news, and some challenges to come, which we all know. Discussion item for tonight, school board action, next meeting. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, if you have. And everybody looks.
Everybody's looking at Joe.
I have a question, if Joe doesn't want to ask a question.
I, I, you know, it's, I, the only comment I have is, it's, I know the budget process is, it's a long time to get to, get to this point, so I'd like to congratulate Bill and his team for, for getting there. The challenges in the future, just, you look at that enrollment decrease over the next five years, and it's, it's a number, let's just put it that way. It is a number that is... People need to move to Shockley with kids. It's a great place, Valley Parents here, come on. But yeah, I don't have any questions.
I guess it's not really a question, it's more of just a comment, and Joe touched on, I think, obviously, the enrollment projections, we knew this was coming. I think it's just now a stark reality of, of where we're moving with, as you noted, the loss of the big classes at the high school, and the smaller numbers coming in elementary, which is an impact on our ADM, and how we get paid, and the state as well, with, I think, 1.2, if I remember right.
Per secondary, yes.
Yeah, per secondary, so it's even a bigger hit than just the number of students. It's a bigger financial impact. And then I'd guess the other thing that concerns me, which we all can look at the crystal ball and, and make our guesses, but the state formula increases. And the 2% for this coming school year is not, that's not enough, we know that it's not enough, even with the rate of the inflation kicker that was adding on to it. I mean, that doesn't even equate to increases in our costs, blessing, salaries, et cetera, supplies, and everything. So, I think moving forward, there's, there needs to be some change at the state level. We're not the only school district that's impacted by that, and are having decline in enrollment, and are having to make big budget cuts because the funding is not keeping up. So, I'm hopeful that we'll see some positive things out of the next session, but I think that, to me, is, is a wild card in our future here at Shockley, not just the declining enrollment. If the state is not going to give us more than 2%, I don't think it's, it's going to be a pretty picture.
Makes it all a challenge.
Well, and then with all the mandates.
Yeah.
Put on top of it, that does not, local control is, is, is leaving us, and we need to have that local control back to us, to allow us to put the dollars where districts need to put the dollars, because every district is different, every district has a different situation, so, not all the same, unfortunately.
And the individual districts know what's best, for the individual districts better than the state does with their universal mandates.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the action item I mentioned earlier, item 7.1, consideration to approve the SEA collective bargaining agreement, and Dr. Redman will present.
Yeah, you pop the highlights up there, and then we'll flip to the, the second page. I think we, we shared with the board members while we were wrapping at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, that Shockley Education Association, the members of that association voted to, voted in favor of ratifying the current contract proposal, which is great news. Before we get into the details, again, I think it, you know, it bears repeating, but number one, want to say thank you to the members of our personnel committee negotiating team, Caroline, and Christie, and Jeff, put in a lot, a lot of time and effort, and again, and our counterparts working on behalf of our Shockley Education Association, too, the teacher group, and so, again, we hold our teachers in the highest regard. We've got a lot of people doing great work, day in, day out, for, for our students and their families in our community. So, some details here before I, I recommend the, the board approve this, and hopefully you'll take that action up then. There's some stuff in the form of total compensation, there's, you know, a couple different things there, I'm not going to read all of that. I'm probably going to point at, actually, I, I think that one's, I think I must have hooked the wrong one up, the MSBA two-year there. That's actually, now, if we've, let's flip to the next one, if it's on there. It's actually, if you scroll to the bottom, we'll start on the bottom here, Tiffany. It's actually 9.76%, and so, I think I grabbed, when I grabbed that, I grabbed it off the wrong one. You can see how that compares to recent two-year contract settlements with the Shockley teachers. And if we scroll to the, the top of this, kind of, it, it really aligns well with, you heard Bill talking about total costs, you know, total expenditures, total revenue, which is really, you know, if you're managing a school district, we tend to, we tend to think in macro, kind of, you know, what are those total costs? We break it down per teacher, you'll see the annual compensation, and compensation is all the things that we're paying in the, you know, in the first year of this agreement, that we were not paying in the year before. And then another increase in year two, again, you know, new money, you know, things we were, were paying for in year two that we were not paying in year one. Compensation is dominated by salary. There's a lot of benefits that go along with salary. You know, Teachers Retirement Association, FICA, some of those things that are driven by, by the rate of salary. And you can see what those numbers are on average per teacher in, in year one and year two. If we scroll down to the next section there, kind of in terms of ongoing total compensation, that's there. There was some one-time money used in year one, and there were two reasons for that as, you know, as these negotiations have carried on for quite, quite some time. This, this allowed us to provide an exact increase in the dollar amount in salary for each teacher of, you know, the part of the salary increase that wasn't already put forward, going from ten pay periods last year to twenty-six this year on the new salary schedule. That allowed, you know, kind of a little bit of evenness in that change. And the other thing it does is it allows our, our finance department to process this and come up with one lump sum payment, which is, you know, akin to retro pay, which is kind of a very important concept for many in education. And again, you've got the settlement costs there. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Congratulations, everybody, on getting this accomplished. I know that you guys spent, three of you had long hours. So finally see it completed, so congratulations. And congratulations to the teachers. I think it's a great, a great deal for them.
I guess I, I would add, I, just to impress through the whole process, you know, even, even when we had some, some pretty, pretty large disagreements, where it felt like we were not close together, everybody was, was, you know, professional and, and everybody had a, had a good attitude in wanting to make this work. And I'm impressed by both Dale on the, the, the SEA side and Keith on the, you know, and, and Dr. Redman, just trying to come up with creative, creative solutions when it felt like we were close on a total dollar amount, but there were, there, you know, continued to be, you know, some, some specific issues that the teachers had that we, we continued to plug away at it and, and came up with some, you know, just the, you know, the, the, the retro pay kind of concept that I think really addressed, you know, some, some issues. And yeah, it's just, yeah, just a credit to Dr. Redman and to Keith and to Dale for, for continuing to plug away at that.
Yeah, lucky that. It was, you know, a different negotiation session or year. Every district, I think, experienced this for the most part. Shakopee's not alone. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, we came to an agreement on something that met what we set out to do at the beginning. And, you know, one of the things I think that challenges us, and this kind of goes back to some of the things that, from a finance perspective, that, you know, we don't have Q Comp, and when we look at the comparisons of our other districts, that hurts us. And yes, we have an operating levy, but we, the dollar amount that we get is pretty significantly less than some other of our competing districts that we compare ourselves. Two of those present a lot of challenges when you're trying to Yoshi and keep your teachers, you know, as close to average or in the middle of the pack as you, as you can. And I know that, that is something that we want to do and, and believe that we need to do. But we also, you know, have to be, as much as, as we want, you know, I think we all want our teachers to be the highest paid ever in the state of Minnesota, I guess. But we also have to stay within our own financial constraints and be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And I think this agreement kind of helps us help both sides achieve kind of what we set out to do in a positive way.
Well, this was my first time with the teacher negotiations, and I have to say I appreciate the partnership of the SEA, Dale and the team. It was really nice collaboration and partnership. And there are some times we're far off and just, I loved how we came back and kind of worked together and put this together, and I think it's, it's a really great deal. So super proud.
Well, if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the SEA collective bargaining agreement as presented.
We have a motion by Peterson, a second by Mohammed. Further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item eight, information. My scrolling is not working right now. There we go. District update, eight point one with Dr. Redman.
Lots of good stuff here. Talked a little bit about the community conversation and survey. Lots more to come on, on June twenty-fourth, but good numbers of participants, lots of responses. You know, and like I said, more, more, more on that in a, in a few weeks. Lots of things going on for future Sabres. You know, we talked about enrollment. I really appreciate all the effort that goes into the processes to work with families and, and bring our, you know, our youngest learners, you know, into our, our school family. And lots of really neat things happening there with Sabre Cubs. And then again, this summer, we're seeing, you know, good numbers in, in terms of projected kindergarten enrollments, you know, coming in and being handled well. And then we've got the, you know, that August Kinder Camp again coming up, and that's just a fantastic event too. Kind of, you heard Eric Service talk about some of those transition things into the ninth grade. Here's our program kind of transitioning our, you know, our learners into kindergarten, which is really important too. This was, I alluded to this earlier with, you know, the absence of the South, you know, Southwest news media and Shakopee Valley News. One of the things, you know, just kind of taking a look, going, all right, it makes sense to add a fourth of that, you know, larger scale printed newsletter that goes to all taxpayers and district families. You know, trying to look for ways to expand the physical distribution or availability and format and, you know, certainly open to other ideas. And again, want to, want to continue to communicate as well as we possibly can. I've been reading, and this has nothing to do with, and I won't go long into that over the weekend a lot, about school district communications. And one of the things that struck me is, you know, one of, they talk about consistent communications and, and trying to get things where it's a really nice systemic process. And I, I just applaud the efforts of Tiffany and Amber in that area. We've come a long ways in terms of just the consistency of high-quality communications. And that puts us in a good position, I, I think, to kind of figure out how to grapple with the, the loss of a local newspaper. What can we, what can we do more of that we're already doing? Where might there be some other areas where, you know, we can make sure that, that we're connecting with our entire community in ways that, that help them to understand all the great things that are happening in our district, to be quite frank. Last, the final instructional leadership meeting of the school year, update there. We held it over at Red Oak again. Just applaud, applaud the efforts of everybody involved in that. Incredible, incredible work in terms of safety in this, the planning going on for the event on, on June twentieth. But the city of Shakopee, Shakopee PD, Shakopee Fire, Scott County, national partners, just, just continuing to update that planning and preparing the reunification planning exercise for June twentieth. You know, again, building confidence with school staff, increase the alignment with local partners. Again, you're hoping you never need to use this, but there are things that happen in school districts, you know, a gas leak, a boiler that breaks down and other things. And so just, just fantastic work. I noticed, you know, calling out Tracy and Cannon in the work with, I love you guys in that last bullet, and my gosh, their work is, it's off the charts good. Lots of great things in terms of inclusion, the GLOMIS programs. It was the eighth annual track and field day, got moved indoors due to the weather. Just one of the, one of the coolest events. And, you know, it, it continues to affirm our, our designation as a national banner, Udefine Champion School, our Shakopee High School. And you'll notice, you may recognize the, the, one, at least one of the people in the bottom right, but Ian Leonard from Fox Nine. Yes, all the, you know, Special Olympics and those programs are really near and dear to his heart, his team's heart. And so they continue to take an interest and go, my gosh, things are really, really cool in Shakopee when it comes to inclusion in this GLOMIS program. And they're right. There's some sounds and sights of Shakopee, lots of things going on, wrapping up all kinds of, you know, performances and athletic seasons and final projects. And again, that, that idea of an activity for every kid and a kid in every activity, it's heartwarming to, when our kids are connected that way and doing things above and beyond the, the classroom. Learning happens in all kinds of places. And kind of wrapping up the class of two thousand twenty-four, sorry, Aditya. It's amazing, it's June. I mean, I'm not sure how that happened, but great celebration of Avid. You know, the Avid seniors were awarded more than eight point eight million in scholarships. Senior Awards Night, I was at that. Lots of, you know, lots of incredible donations from members of our community at Dollars for Scholars. You know, the last academic day for our seniors is June fourth. Graduation is Saturday. But just a really, really cool time of year to honor an amazing class of students in our class of twenty-four. Other celebrations, you know, again, that recognition of graduation. And it was really enjoyable. A number of folks in this room were at the Feather Ceremony, very touching. And then the ribbon cutting just last week for the smudging space at the high school was, was incredibly touching. And some of the things that, that people said about how meaningful it was to them actually moved me and, and they were powerful. And then I know Bill shared some of this, I think, in the most recent wrap. But again, you know, the work of the food service, supporting the programs that Mr. Service was talking about, but also having the availability of free summer meals is ready to go. I think that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Redman.
Thank you.
All right, next is item nine, committee reports and other information. Let's start with our soon to be graduate, Aditya. So you're, you're penultimate meeting with us, you have one more?
Sorry about that. Yeah, this is my.
Yeah.
This is my second-to-last meeting. It's been a long ride, but I enjoyed every moment of it. I did, I've been part of things that I've never thought I could, I would ever actually be part of. And it's a really amazing learning experience being on this board and helping out with all the amazing things that we do. Fortunately, I don't have much to report. I was unable to go to the community engagement committee meeting, the school thing. But overall, I, I'm happy that I was able to be part of this.
We're happy that you are able to be part of this.
Thank you. Michelle?
Same as Aditya, just kind of finishing up the year, wrapping things up. I was able to go to the community engagement committee meeting. Nothing much to report from there, just where the main, main, main meeting is going to be moved to August because Mary Hearn, unfortunately, wasn't able to be there because of her sickness. Um, I don't know, I'm just looking into, starting to look into post-secondary options. And it's kind of dawning on me that I'm a senior next year, so that's, that's something there too.
Thank you. Caroline?
Well, as Aditya graduates, we'll be welcoming Shauna to the community engagement team, and we'll have that office with, and I volunteered to be her mentor. We just went over a lot of the snapshot of activities that were happening. We talked about rhythm of the rails that's coming up here in June. And, you know, we are going to sign up as board members to participate. We talked about the Kinder Camp roundup, just like the registration, how that's going, stepping stones, and we're talking about maybe trying to do something with kinder care, maybe like dairy, dairy cleaners partnering up, I don't know. Like just to engage with the families and the, the kids that, you know, come out of that program. That's just a high-level overview of kind of what we talked about.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I couldn't attend the Feather Ceremony unfortunately because of a commitment to a young woman at a choir concert. Always something going on at Shakopee. But I heard just great things there. Did participate in the dedication to the smudging space. And I learned more in that hour, you know, just in terms of all the conversation around it and how it positively impacts our indigenous students. I didn't realize we had, you know, our Supreme, Minnesota Supreme Court Justice and our Lieutenant Governor, just the, the roots in that space. So that was really fulfilling. I attended this Sabre Showcase, was a small, mighty crew. Figured out a lot of other activities and things. But the innovation and just the, the thought process there was great to engage with students. And I remiss, there's a Shakopee mountain bike team that is starting to ramp up. They'll come up this summer in July, so certainly room on the team. Particularly the young, young women. There's a, was a group that girls can ride. And they did a big introduction with some of our female coaches as well, but. Go Sabres.
Christie?
Saturday, I helped with the color run that was over at Sunpass. So that was a lot of mine. There were, what, two hundred people that participated. It was, it was a great showing and everyone had a great time. Rain stopped just in time, so that was good. Just want to give a quick update on Southwest Metro, the superintendent's search process that is ongoing. This week, the board will be reviewing all of the applicants and some additional questionnaire that the applicants were asked to complete before we go through and review and make up selections. June thirteenth is the date that the search committee has set to select who the finalists will be. And we're hoping by the end of the day, that day, that we will have the finalists announced to the public after the board and the staff are notified. And then on June eighteenth is a board meeting, and that night will be the final interviews. Those will take place at the Dean Lakes Building over by the Alina Clinic Shutterfly. So if anybody is interested in wanting to see how that all goes and who the candidates are, you're more than welcome to attend. I believe we're working on a streaming option as well for those that would like to watch from home, so. But again, it's an open meeting, public meeting, so anybody, anybody is welcome to attend. So that will, that's exciting to finally.
What time? The nineteen minutes, what time?
Five-thirty is the start. We'll have some regular board items. We'll have to take care of first some action items, and then the interviews will start after that. And we're hoping to have a selection made that evening. That's the goal anyway. It's a little bit different from our regular board because we only meet once a month, and we typically don't meet June and July. So this is kind of put back on the calendar because of trying to expedite this and have somebody selected before July first. I have a state high school league meeting tomorrow morning. And then I just want to say good luck to our state track and golf participants. I believe we have a boy golf participant, I think there's one, maybe. I believe we have a boy golf participant, I think there's one, maybe two, and then we've got a bunch of track participants. So state tournaments are coming up here this week, so good luck to them.
Thank you. I attended both the, the feather ceremony and the ribbon cutting at the smudging space. And I'll just echo everybody here, it was just really, both of them just really moving. And it's interesting to me, the feather ceremony, eight students, eight, you know, Shakopee graduates recognize their seven distinct tribes. You know, so there's only one there from like the, you know, SCMC. So it's really, just the diversity among our indigenous people is, is kind of eye-opening and impressive, too. Yeah, finance facilities committee meeting tonight, SEA negotiations that we completed successfully. I'm really happy about that. And then tomorrow is constructive feedback committee for the, the capital projects levy. It was the larger group discussing that going forward.
Joe?
I was really bummed in this, the, the feather ceremony. I was sprinting through an airport in Phoenix to barely make my plane. I did get back at some point that next day. Finance facilities meeting today, we talked about the, the levy number. We talked about the budget in a little bit more detail than, than Bill did tonight. We haven't, nobody's mentioned Sabre tonight. I know that we did earlier, but it was, it was really a great night. It was, and I've not, I've gone to every single one since I've been on the board except for 2020, when we didn't have one due to COVID. And just every year, it gets better. And, and it's, it really is just a great night. We have Takata graduation coming up Thursday morning. I believe it's at 10:00. I'm going to try to make that in graduation Saturday night. Really, and I've said this before, the best part about being on the board is really graduation night, being able to celebrate with our graduates.
Yeah, so you mentioned Sabre the night. That's also a highlight of the year for me. It was a really exciting point for me personally, because my son, who is 11, his preschool teacher got an award that night. So it was pretty cool to be like, that's Ms. Kelly. The, yeah, the smudging space dedication was extremely cool in a lot of ways. One thing we haven't mentioned is that, that cake. Our culinary students are giving Costco a run for their money. Cake was really good. I'm going to try to go to the TLC graduation this Thursday. I'm going to do my best to fight off my real job so that I can go to that. And then Rhythm of the Rails coming up over the summer. I'm going to try to hit most of those.
I attended Evan Maitt, all the awards, also senior awards, middle school. So my daughter, she, she's in the Evan program, also high-ranking honor. She's going to Minnesota, University of Minnesota, Rochester. She wants to be a doctor. So, and everybody was happy. Something, you know, the community are, are very interested. Because last week, 29, that week was busy. And the community, you know, they, they liked it. They think, yeah, this is what we need, you know, to continue. And so that's kind of the community engagement. And to see, like Evan program, 10 of the students are, are some other girls. Forty, so 10 of them. So it's a big number. But there is no boys there. And that's, you know, everywhere. Some girls are doing a fantastic job, you know, when it comes to school. So I'm very, very happy to be a part of the Shakopee schools and see, you know, a lot of good things happening there. They have, like, they have school board, care about students, put this, the students' interests, you know, first. And the teachers, you know, so, yeah, that's all. I, I don't have anything. I don't have others. Also, I'm very happy for Simon, the graduation. And I already put down my, my speech. So I would not disappoint you.
Looking forward to that.
I will, yeah. So, yeah, I'm ready.
Under a half hour.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I will try my best.
You don't think it'll be under a half hour, or you think it'll be shorter than a half hour?
It will be short. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it will be short, yeah. I think they will protest, you know. If it's more than five minutes.
You have to get it under five.
Mine was under five. Mine there?
Oh, like yours was like 10?
The original one was probably 15. Every day, I'm like, well, I can't say that because I'm on a crisis. So by the time I was done, it was under five.
Yeah, I will try, yeah. Do as much as I can. So be patient for me. If I go, if I go 10 minutes.
I'll ring a bell.
Please do my best.
I'll come and tap you on the shoulder.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
I'll do my best, yeah.
Jim?
So many great events, though. Just also call out the Steve Picknick with the police on 12. If you haven't had a chance to attend that, fantastic event. I'm looking forward to that already.
Thank you. Tiffany?
The only two items I would like to add is that we have a fantastic class of 2023 intern who was with us this summer, Mackenzie Kirkland, and she's doing a great job capturing all these events and other very meaningful projects. We're happy to have her. She's presently at ISU and skipped a whole year because of what she, she was able to do in the academies of Shakopee. So she's going in as a junior next year, which is fantastic. And also just really excited to elaborate on the survey and community conversation via Thought Exchange at the next meeting that we have. I can just say overall, appreciate the thoughtfulness of what was put in by our community. I think it's really relevant topics, and I think there's a lot to be proud of in our school district. So I feel just overall, it's, it's been enjoyable to be able to go through and find good feedback and opportunities and also affirmation of those that are really working hard to support our students and families.
Thank you. Dr. Redmond?
I'm good. I've really talked plenty already this evening, so, yeah. Just a great time of school year to celebrate the many, many great things that have been happening in our school district.
All right, next on our agenda, item 10, upcoming meetings and important dates. We talked about, you know, TLC on Thursday and graduation on Saturday. Tomorrow's the, the last day of school for our seniors. Last day for all students is the 6th. Anything else you want to bring up for, for upcoming events here? With that, I would entertain a motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion by Rofey, a second by Aldrich. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?